Good afternoon. I will call to order the June 12th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Suezy, Lupe Pierre, and Rockwell at this time. If you wouldn't mind silencing any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. First, our first item in business is to approve the actions from the May 22nd meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item in business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. And we'll determine which items we will consider on the consent agenda and which items will be discussed. So, starting at the top of the agenda. Item one is a right-of-way vacation in the vicinity of 11th Avenue South and South Fifth Street. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put that on consent. Item two is a drainage and utility easement vacation near Franklin and Portland avenues. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one will put item two on consent. Item three is the Pioneer Triangle Vacation, also a street vacation in the vicinity of Fifth Avenue Northeast and Main Street Northeast. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put that on consent. Item four is the NRRC House Rehab at 1303 Golden Valley Road. Three applications related to rezoning and reuse of a building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put that on consent. Item five is at 815 13th Avenue Southeast. Three variances related to an existing multifamily building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put that on consent. Item six is 1003rd at 1,000 North Third Street. Several applications for reuse of an existing building in addition there. We'll discuss item six if anyone is here for that item. Item seven is the Milwright Building at 513 South Third Street. Two variances related to signs there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item seven? See, no one will put that on consent. Item eight is the Kraus-Anderson Block Redevelopment at 816 Portland Avenue and 801, 817, 823, and 831 Fifth Avenue South. That's a conditional use permit for a PUD amendment related to signs. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? See, no one will put item eight on consent. Item nine is the Minneapolis Armory at 500 South Sixth Street. A couple of applications there for reuse of an existing building. We'll discuss item nine. I understand Commissioner Kronzer has a brief question related to landscaping on that project. So, we'll discuss that. Item 10 is the Shear Site and Halls Island Reconstruction at 900 Sibley Street Northeast. Conditional use permit to build an island there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 10? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 11 is the Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge Gymnasium Expansion at 101 32nd Street East and 3231 through 3245 First Avenue South. That is an application for expansion of a non-conforming use and site plan review. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 11? Yes, you're here? I'll need you to come to the microphone, but we can pull it from consent and ask you if you have a question. So, we'll discuss item 11. Item 12 is at 2200 Fillmore Street Northeast. Several applications in conjunction with a minor subdivision there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 12? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 13 is at 3501 through 3509 Second Avenue South. Several applications for a new multifamily building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 13? See, no one will put that on consent. And, let's see, moving along. Item 14 is a zoning code text amendment related to regulations for live theater in industrial districts. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 14? See, no one will put that on consent. And I will note that we have some revised language for that text amendment. Finally, item 15 is the MPS Adult Education and Transition Plus Final Plaid at 2005, 2011, 2015, and 2019 East Lake Street, 3013, 3017, 20th Avenue South, and 3008, 3012, and 3016, 21st Avenue South. That is a final plaid. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 15? See, no one will put that on consent. Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, just to note that on item number eight, that was the Kraus-Anderson sign package to amend the planning development. Just to note to planning commissioners that the roof sign that would have been viewed from above that would be flat against the roof was withdrawn by the applicant.
All right. Thanks for the clarification on that. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15 will be on consent. And we'll discuss items 6, 9, and 11. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Oh, we have a question. Item four. Yeah, that's fine. We can make that change and pull that from consent. So, why don't I read those again? So, items 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15 will be on consent. And we'll discuss items 4, 6, 9, and 11. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. And at the May 25th Committee of the Whole meeting, we considered several things. First, the location and design review for the 2018 through 2022 capital improvement projects. We also considered several land sales. Now, I'll read all of those addresses. 1210 Irving Avenue North, 1607 Thomas Avenue North, 1826th Avenue North, 4646 Bryant Avenue North, 2954 Morgan Avenue North, 1519 Thomas Avenue North, and 3015 Thomas Avenue North. Also, 4123 Colfax Avenue North and 3,006 Russell Avenue North. We found that all of those items were consistent with the comprehensive plan. And Commissioners may have a motion finding that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And at this time, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. And our first item for discussion is item four, the NRRC House Rehab. Staff is Mr. Baker. And I believe we just had one person who had a question or comment on that. Maybe you could come to the microphone and just ask your question or if you had a brief comment.
Hi, Will Stensrud. And I own the two duplexes just south of this location. I actually owner occupied one of those duplexes for 12 years, starting in 2004 through 2016. And I know very much this lot and the history of this lot. I have been in communication with NERC and am cautiously excited about the opportunity to turn this into a community office space. I guess my concern and what I'm asking the Commission here is for a little bit of feedback on your understanding of the exact plan and the funding of the plan. Are you all satisfied with the fact that there is funding for this specific plan to go through? If you're not satisfied, is this the right time to be making such a variance? My concern would be if NERC is unable to fulfill their hopeful ideas that this variance will be, have been made. And any other idea that falls in line with this kind of code would have a green light to move forward without a similar public hearing. And my reason for raising my hand in this matter, also the red light, red flag rather for me, is seeing that they have until June 2017 to complete all of this work. That's two years. Maybe I've read this incorrectly. It seems like an awfully liberal timeline. I myself have been responsible for five, I'm sorry, three properties on that block being turned around, converted, and stabilized. I've also partnered with PRG to do two other properties on that block. I'm very much aware of timelines and I'm just concerned about the liberal nature of that timeline for this particular parcel.
All right. Thank you. And we can address some of your comments in a moment. I might just ask staff to provide a very brief presentation and potentially address some of those issues.
My name is Nicholas Baker. Item before you know is the NRCC House Rehab at 1303 Golden Valley Road. This is currently a single-family residence located in the R2B2 family district. It's a combination of what were formerly several lots. The lot size currently is about 11,000 square feet. Fifth Ward, it is in the near north neighborhood. Designated future land use in the citywide comprehensive plan is urban neighborhood. It is not directly adjacent to a designated land use feature. However, it is a very short block, about 155 feet from the West Broadway Avenue Commercial Corridor. And this is an area covered by the West Broadway Alive Plan, which was approved in 2008. Proposal, Northside Residence Redevelopment Council is proposing to renovate the single-family home, serve as their office space and headquarters. It's about 1,500 square feet, which would utilize the existing building entrances with modifications for accessibility. There's currently one parking space in the detached garage on the site. However, they have indicated a desire to convert that garage to other uses in the New fencing is proposed around the perimeter of the site, which will meet the zoning code requirements. And they've discussed a range of other site improvements, kind of conceptually. However, none of those are proposed at this time. So, there are three applications before you. One is the rezoning. Rezone this property from the R2B2 family district to OR1 Neighborhood Office Residence District. The second is to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from three to zero. They do qualify for the bicycle incentive to reduce their required parking from four to three. And they're requesting the variance to reduce that requirement to zero. And the third variance is to increase the maximum lot size of an office use in the OR1 Neighborhood Office District. The maximum size is 10,000 square feet. So, this lot is just over what would normally be the maximum allowed size for an office use. We analyzed the rezoning request with respect to the five required findings. Generally, staff is supportive of rezoning in this location due to the close proximity to the West Broadway Corridor, as well as Emerson and Fremont Corridors, community corridors to the east. Analyzed the two variances with respect to the three required variance findings. First variance to reduce the number, required number of off-street parking spaces from three to zero. We found that practical difficulties did exist on the site, that the property was going to be used in a reasonable manner, that will be keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and that the proposed variance would not alter the essential character of locality. Again, we analyzed the second variance and increased the maximum lot size of an office in this district from 10,000 to 11,000 square feet. And again, we did not feel that, we felt that there were practical difficulties in this instance, being a kind of combined lot with a lot of kind of open space on the lot. Second, that they're proposing to use it in a reasonable manner. They're not increasing the size of the dwelling or altering the character of the area. And again, that it's in keeping with the, would not alter the character of locality or be detrimental to use of any other properties in the area. No written comments were received. And staff is recommending approval of all three applications, the rezoning, as well as the two variances, with a few conditions on the parking variance. At least four bicycle parking spaces must be provided to meet that initial reduction from a requirement of four to three spaces. And the other two are essentially standard requirements, including the two-year timeframe, which is standard under the ordinance. Are there any questions for staff from the Commissioners?
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Vreeland.
I guess there were some questions asked by, previously to your presentation. Can you answer those questions? Does the financial capacities affect any of the findings?
No, we did not analyze the capacity of the applicant, financial capacity of the applicant to undertake the renovations. That's not part of our, that's not part of any of the requests or part of our kind of purview, as part of this review.
And the other issue was, were you making some differentiation of timeline according to who the applicant was?
None at all. The two-year timeline is standard for all approvals by the planning commission.
And Mr. Wittenberg, maybe you want to clarify, and then Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Commissioners, I actually think that Mr. Baker referred that sufficiently. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, that two-year window is, that's in the code that for any approval, an applicant would have two years to implement the project, and then the approval expires.
That's correct. Commissioners, that is the ordinance standard. If there were some unique circumstances that you found here where you felt it was more appropriate to have a more quick turnaround, given the scale of the project, that would be authorized certainly. But generally, the standard is two years.
And for the parking variance as well, does that, is that approval tied with the project? Or if the project didn't occur, does that parking variance still run with the property?
Commissioners, for a similar use to locate in the building, that would run with the property. However, if the applicant did not take advantage of those land use applications for some period of time, that would expire after a year.
Okay. Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Yes, I just, just to be clear. So, the rezoning, I'm having Ted Tucker's, rezoning is forever going through my brain right now. So, if we move and approve the rezoning, and then within two years, this fails to happen, are you saying that then it reverts back to, or residential, or does it stay office?
Yeah, the rezoning would be an ordinance of council and would remain in place.
Okay, so the zoning is forever. So, it would be office from going forward.
Correct, which we felt was appropriate at this location, regardless of the specific proposal.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. And then, so I had two kind of follow-ups to that. One is, can you go over some of the other allowable uses in that zoning district then? Just, so I know. And then, my second question is, did the neighborhood, I believe this is located in Old Highland, did they get a chance to weigh in on it? And what were their thoughts should this not happen about having a business next residential uses off of Broadway?
So, there are a small number of additional uses that are allowed in the OR1 district. There are also somewhat more lenient height and yard restrictions. The applicant is the neighborhood group, so they're obviously supportive of their application.
Are there any further questions? Or Commissioner Lupe Pierre, did you have anything else?
I'm just, I'm just looking at this. I was just wondering, because I, I don't know if I would be, if over me, I wouldn't be too keen about having a multiple five-unit dwelling next door to me thinking. And something that was originally a single-family home, but I think in north, we've seen all sorts of things. So, I just wanted to know if the neighbors, if there was a meeting about this, not. But other than that, that would be my main question and concern, and just the other allowable uses and whether or not that works. Thanks.
Yeah, we did not receive any other additional comments as a result of the notice.
Okay. Are there any further questions of? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on this item. And we heard from one speaker. I'd like to ask the applicant to, or at least give the applicant an opportunity to speak if there's anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant. If you'd like to just very briefly address any issues that arose.
Hi, I'm Martine Smaller, and I'm Executive Director of the Northside Residence Redevelopment Council. What questions can I answer?
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Hi.
Hi.
So, I think the question that I have, and I think some others have, given that if the rezoning is approved, it's kind of with the forever and ever, is NERC feeling pretty confident that they're able to, you know, secure the funding and proceed and get this completed in two years? Or?
Yes, we are.
And should it not? I trust since you're the neighborhood, the larger neighborhood organization, that is there any assurance you can give to the neighbors that this won't be sold to somebody who's going to put something there that would possibly be detrimental to the surrounding neighbors? You know, I can think of a million things I wouldn't want to live next to, but this looks lovely.
Absolutely. As a neighborhood organization, if we weren't to occupy the space, we would want something that is harmonious with the neighborhood to be there. So, yeah.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing. And let's see, Commissioners, we have three applications before us, rezoning. All right. Commissioner Vreeland has moved staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Suezy?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So, that's 6-0.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Our next item for discussion is item six, 1,003rd. Staff is Mr. Crandall. And I understand the applicant just wanted to discuss one of the outstanding issues. We obviously saw this at Committee of the Whole, so maybe you could just address that
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior City Planner with Land Use. This project, you may recall, was submitted to an original meeting in late April. And this is a resubmission of that project largely unchanged with some minor alterations to exterior materials. There are four applications associated with this project. A conditional use permit to increase the building height, variance to the minimum loading requirement, variance to increase the maximum height of a wall sign, and then site plan review. This is a renovation and addition to an existing warehouse building in the north loop. The applicant has expressed some concern over one particular condition of approval for the site plan review application. Condition, let's see, number three under site plan review, which is that the applicant will implement discontinuous curbing in the parking lot adjacent to the building. The footprint of the building is not changing much from the existing footprint. There is an existing vituminous parking lot to the rear of the structure that is somewhat less formalized than the proposal. This is an aerial view of the site as it stands today largely. So, this is the proposed site plan that includes the surface parking lot to the rear And the proposed landscaping plan, you'll see that there is some additional proposed landscaping surrounding the proposed resurfaced parking lot. And our condition was to provide discontinuous curbing along that rear curb to facilitate onsite stormwater infiltration, which is a common condition that we put on projects when they're implementing a surface parking lot to reduce the impact of stormwater on the existing infrastructure. So, I'll leave it to the applicant to discuss their issues with that condition, but just a little bit of background on what that is.
All right. And Commissioners, are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak. And please state your name and address for the record. And if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about that stormwater issue, that would be good.
Sure. Hi, I'm Amanda Jansen, Project Manager, Schiffer Richardson. We're looking at 900 North Third Street. You know, just, we're excited about this project of renovating an utterly lies industrial building, extending the north loop past 10th Avenue, which is sort of a barrier and an edge to the neighborhood. You know, we, the one item that I would like the Commissioners to reconsider is to remove the condition to provide the discontinuous curbing. The site is less than one acre. It's .5 acres. So, stormwater management is not required for the city, state, or watershed. And also, because we're reusing the existing building for the first two floors, it's difficult to modify the grading to provide onsite infiltration while also maintaining accessible slopes and to the parking lot and the main entry. So, those are the two reasons why we would like to have that condition to be removed.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Vreeland, and then Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
It's hard to know without knowing the, where the water's going, but is it continuous, if you have a continuous curb, where is the water going?
I can have our architect come up and help provide a couple more questions or answers. David Holland.
Yeah. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, David Holland with Urban Works Architecture. We're offset 901 North Third Street, just across the way here. And essentially, the, if we were to open that up, we would, we would be spilling onto the neighbor's property as well. We did have our civil engineer look into that, but it's a relatively level site. And so, it currently drains to the center. So, we're trying to maintain that existing grading without disturbing the adjacent properties, essentially, and building something that's really unnatural to funnel with water.
And you are collecting the water in the center?
Correct. Yep.
And the discontinuous was?
And currently, that, right now, it would, it would, it would just overflow into the street before it would get into the, those green areas. And again, to regrade the parking lot and basically to grade everything the opposite way that it currently drains right now would mean you'd be digging a pit towards the school. I guess that's the plan northwest there. And so, it really, it's really not practical for us to do that. And because we really need to maintain the accessible entrances on the, on the Third Street side.
And pardon my ignorance, but does the discontinuous mean that you have to regrade it? I mean, if it were just?
You would. I mean, if you put a discontinuous curb, I guess it essentially, in its current state, it wouldn't do anything.
So?
I guess, you know, we, you know, it just doesn't make sense to, you know, because it's not actually going to infiltrate, because the water's all draining the opposite direction is really the point. So, I mean, in a way, you could, it just, it's setting an expectation for infiltration. It's not, can't be accomplished with existing grading, I guess is really the main point.
Unless it floods, and it's another way for the water to infiltrate at least somewhat. So, I'm just wondering, is there additional cost? I mean, if, if you don't regrade and it's discontinuous as per the staff recommendation, is there any harm or additional cost to you?
No, in that regard, no. I think it's, as long as there's not an expectation of the infiltration, so it would, it'd be okay.
And Mr. Wittenberg, do you need to clarify?
Commissioners, just to confirm, it certainly wasn't our intent to require the applicant to completely regrade the property. The discontinuous curbing would simply allow for the possibility of infiltration during some rain events at least.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow this along. Can you actually point on there, or is it not on the overhead system on the computer? Darn it. I'm trying to find out where the water's pooling or where the grade is because there's no topography on our site plan.
Okay, so if you can, right here is the current catch basin. So everything right now funnels in that direction. So that's kind of the low point right here. So there's a catch basin here and a catch basin here. So again, we're trying to maintain the street and the boulevard characteristics here and improving that quite a bit, actually. And then, so then when you enter here, this grade is really set, and this is the lower point. So this all kind of funnels here. So really, I mean, yes, to be honest, you could break the curb a couple times here, but yeah, there won't be any infiltration.
So just, I'm just looking at this, trying to figure this out. So there's these landscaped areas along the perimeter there to the kind of north and west and whatnot. And right now in the aerial, it appeared to be kind of gravel. It seemed like the asphalt was already failing along the perimeter anyway. Are you really regrading or are you just patching in the current parking lot? Or are you actually redoing the parking lot? Because it seems like a lot of it's not established anyway.
Right, we'll be repaving it. It's new by two months. And then providing, the perimeter over here is, that is a green pervious area. And I think the base calculations show it still has pervious.
But on your landscaping plan, those were shown as planted possible drainage areas?
Yep. So yeah, there's a landscaping plan.
Okay, so in repaving the parking lot and creating these landscaped areas, you're saying it's impractical to have a few gaps in the curbing to allow water to go into the landscaped areas?
I guess, as long as you're not asking us to regrade the entire set. I guess that's what the point of clarification like?
No, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure in case there was something I was missing as to why that couldn't happen.
The curves are fine, absolutely. That's not a problem. It's just that, you know, if you're asking to infiltrate, to what, to what degree and, you know, to what standards? Because right now, they don't apply. I guess that's really merely a point of clarification, so I think we're okay with dropping the curb here and there, that's just fine.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on item six? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and commissioners, we have four applications before us. Are there any further questions or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Lupe here.
I'm going to move staff recommendation for items A through D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move staff recommendation for all four items, items A through D. Commissioner Rockwell?
We've already covered this, but with the clarification that three should be interpreted as written with no additional text requiring regrading.
All right, so we can just kind of clarify that the grading plan that was submitted still stands, but condition three will still be in place. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six. Our next item for discussion is item nine, the Minneapolis Armory, 500 South Sixth Street. Staff is Ms. DeVorec. And Commissioner Kronzer, I know you had a question related to landscaping, maybe you could ask that now.
The staff proposed condition to remove landscaping, I didn't quite follow, so I was wanting some clarification on that, and maybe the condition could be maybe tightened up a little bit, what exactly we're looking for as far as improving the landscape design.
Sure, so this is the Minneapolis Armory site. It is located in downtown. It has no landscaping requirement. They proposed an excessive number of trees, given the historical context of the property, and so we want them to reduce the number of trees, which I know is abnormal probably for us to recommend, but it does not fit the historical character. This is a designated landmark. So we've asked or conditioned that they work with staff to reduce the number of trees on site to be more historically appropriate for the site.
Could you explain the part about how the site has been landscaped in the past? Because it's, to my recollection, it's been almost completely barren.
Yep, and historically, that's how the site has looked. I mean, what you see out there minus probably the dead trees that were probably living at one point, that is how the site has looked historically, has been large swaths of grass on each side of the property. And the small area plan for this actually calls for a large open green space on the Portland Avenue side. And so while the majority of the trees they're proposing on Fifth Avenue, it wouldn't be historically appropriate to have, it's almost like an orchard, if you will, on that site. There's 24 trees planted in a very small area, and so we're asking them to work with staff. Hennepin County owns the Veterans Memorial on the corner of Fifth and Sixth Streets. They are looking at re-landscaping that whole side of the armory to be more cohesive in design. And so we are, I'm working or waiting for Hennepin County to provide plans for what they want to do in their easement area and then working with them further to move that forward. And we have had conversations, all of us combined, about not having so many trees in that location. So that is how we got to the report. And again, I will just note that they're not required to have any trees or shrubs on the site because they're exempt from our landscaping requirement.
All right.
Sorry, one last question. Did the HPC have any conditions of approval for this property?
Not in terms of the landscaping, no.
Commissioner Gagnon?
Sorry, are the trees an environmental hazard on the property?
No, but they would block the architectural, they would block the building, which would detract from its symmetry, and so that is why we would want them to remove the trees.
Okay, that still just doesn't, okay.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, are there any renderings of the exterior of the buildings? We kind of see what portions would be blocked and not blocked by the trees since there are a few clumps around the site? That side of the building isn't changing, so does the existing building, while that would be blocked. If you will, it's the area in back of the flagpole. It's this whole side of the building that would have those 24 trees in that small amount of space. Can you move it up a little, Hillary? Sorry, I can't. There we go. So is it the whole length or is it just that corner?
So Hennepin County owns this through easement.
You can move that up a little bit.
Sorry, Hennepin County owns that corner through easement.
Even a little further.
This is, I'm not sure. Hennepin County owns that corner and an easement. This is an access point to the underground garage that's existing, so it's this area that we're concerned with, the sheer volume of trees in that area, wanting to not have it be so populated with trees.
And the corner of Sixth and Portland, is there an objection to that landscaping as well, or is that?
This area?
The, all the trees and shrubs and whatnot that are shown over there.
Some of these trees are existing over here. Some have been killed or have died from heat or the construction that's taken place over the last couple of years. There is a hedgerow here that will remain, and one of the conditions that they work with us on a fence plan to rehab the existing bollard and chain fence that exists. Historically, there had been a hedgerow there, and so some of this is working with the applicant. They were, they thought they had a landscape requirement, they were trying to meet that, so they just put a bunch of stuff on the site. We want them to peel off some of that because A, it's not required, and B, it's not historically appropriate for the site, given that historically, most of this, minus a few trees here and there, has been just open yard. So we're really wanting them to maintain the historical nature of the site.
Okay, Commissioner Rockwell?
Hillary, just a point of clarification. Is it the historic nature of the site or maintaining the views of a historic structure?
I would say both.
Both, okay.
And Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes, so the block that Mill City is on had a similar conversation about trees, and there were no trees permitted. And now there's some beautiful elm trees that are planted in a very highly technically wonderful trench in an area that was traditionally without trees. Can you tell me the difference between that change and the conversation we're having today?
I'm not aware of the trees at Mill City. I apologize, I cannot answer that question.
So anyway, in front of Spoon River, and so there's some gorgeously growing trees. It's hard for me not to advocate for trees, especially when that's a city goal, to increase our canopy when our canopy is seriously in decline because of EAB.
I guess I would say that, maybe we should look at it this way. If they were subject to a landscape requirement, they'd be required to have 14 trees. They're proposing 43 on a very small site, very small site for 43 trees. If we want to have trees, we can condition that. I think that's reasonable, even though it's not required, but I would not suggest that we require them to have 43 trees because I think it will detract from the historical nature of the site and from the architectural character of the building.
And they are not required to have 43 trees?
They are not required to have any trees on the property.
So our guidance to them is to not plant trees officially, to prohibit them from planting trees?
That is not our guidance. Our guidance is to reduce the amount of trees on the site. If it would be best to have a number, we could pick a number. We could, I could suggest that. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I wish our landscape architect was here, but he is, he's not. You know, if required, they would be required to have 14, I would suggest something less than that.
And again, landscape architecture would be helpful, but have you talked about the types of trees and canopy trees versus? So again, if these are canopy trees that can provide more canopy and more space underneath, that's a possibility, so.
We have not talked about the species of trees.
Some more information would be helpful, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rockwell?
I would like to make a motion.
We should open the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
Then we can do that. So if there are no further questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing. I'd just like to ask the applicant to speak briefly and maybe touch on the rationale behind the number of trees that are proposed and kind of your response to staff's recommendation.
I'm David Kelly with Kelly Architects. I'm the applicant and the project architect for Armory Holding. To answer your question, there's 21,500 square feet of open space according to the zoning ordinance, one tree for every 500 square feet, so that's the number we worked with, 43. The decision was made to leave the Portland at Sixth more open, as it is right now, with the War Memorial, the landscape architect was thinking, because we need a large number of trees, group them over there formally, make that more of a formal avenue on Fifth, where this would be more pedestrian oriented on Portland, which I believe is the intention of Henneman County to convert, excuse me, Portland to more of a pedestrian bike pathway. So the 43 trees came from one for 500 square feet, but the owners would be more than happy to work with staff to reduce the numbers. They could see an advantage of having more of an open area on the Fifth Avenue side. Some of the possible uses they've been discussing is that a pre-event wine and cheese social, they've mentioned, where there might be temporary tents installed. For a large event, the armory can hold up to 7,000 people, and as people are entering, they're going through security, there might be the need to stage people in these lawn areas because there is the potential to enter on the sides of the building as well as on the front of the building on Sixth. And again, inclement weather, they would have tents out there. As a last resort, they might consider using it for outdoor smoking when you have a large event. One of the uses for the addition that has been proposed is it will have a roof deck at the level of the new exhibition hall, so that during an event, people can go and smoke and not break security, so to speak. There's also a roof deck on the roof of the front of the building, the five-story building. The military, I've always referred to it as the headhouse. So that has a roof deck, so people could go up onto that roof and smoke if they needed to, and again, not have to leave the building. There, the owners assume that these two roof decks should be more than enough to accommodate all smokers, but if it proves not to be the case, they would probably try to develop some temporary secure area so people could go out and smoke and still not wander away or, you know, leave without a ticket, so.
All right, Commissioner Lupe here.
So do you know the species of tree that was being proposed by the landscape architect?
I would have to get out a magnifying glass to read the?
It's an abbreviation for something that I have no idea. So I guess I, is there a number that upon hearing that staff is recommending no trees that you thought would be a good balance between them? Or do you see as the architect, a certain way of planting or framing the trees that would enhance the architecture of the building?
The, one of the principal owners is Ned Abdul, and I had a discussion with him today before he left town, otherwise he would have been here at this meeting. He would be more than happy to have most of the plantings in the Fifth area kind of moved to the public sidewalk and up against these parking ramps, whatever density seems appropriate, so that there's a certain amount of canopy for the people on the sidewalk, but not to the point where it completely blocks views to the sides of the building, so.
And then just, this is unrelated to the landscaping, but are there any roof decks that are not for smoking? Just asking for future reference.
Right now, they're both intended, if needed, for smoking. I mean, it's quite possible that there could be two events going on at the same time inside this building. You could have 2,000, 3,000 people in a conference in the main drill hall, the barrel vaulted space, you might have private weddings going on on the upper levels of the headhouse. So they would both probably wish to have access to smoking areas.
All right, too bad. Imagine the views would be kind of cool for people who don't want to be around smoke, so, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Kronzer, I understand you think you have identified the type of tree?
The abbreviation S U N is an ironwood planted at two and a half inches. Do not know how large that tree grows to.
They can get big.
All right, commissioners, are there any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Vreeland?
You'd delighted to vote for the staff recommendation, but I'd love to get some more tree advice, and we have Craig Pinckella from the Park Board that does, consults on the plan development review, and I would love to have some more expertise for the tree selection and the spacing of the trees. Is that something that would be consistent with the staff recommendation? I guess it's a question for staff.
Yeah.
When Craig typically, I mean, we could ask him as a favor, but he typically only consults on right-of-way trees, not on site trees, because the park board doesn't maintain, as you know, trees that are on private property. So it would just be the trees that would be in the right-of-way. So we could ask him, but they do have a landscape consultant. I think it would probably be best to use their consultants in conjunction with Hennepin County's, furthering their conversation about what they're going to do in the corner of the property with the memorial, because they are looking to redo that. I'm trying to Google a sunbeam ironwood myself right now, and I'm coming up with appliances at Kohl's, so I can't figure out why I can't find it. Maybe Jason Wittenberg could pull it up. I am trying to use my little phone, and it's probably not the best.
Again, Commissioner Slack's not here, and he has far more expertise than I do, but I think we've had failures of ironwood downtown.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we can figure that out.
So again, I'm willing to pass it on as long as there's somebody really looking at making the trees? making the trees that are planted work well and properly spaced.
All right, are there any further questions? Commissioner Gagnon?
So they grow in heat to about 45 feet.
Thank you. I think having 24 in that small area would be way too many. I think we would lose over half of them. I think one would overtake the other, as they do in a forest. I think they're planted too, too close. I would want to confirm that with our landscape architect, because I am not one. But I, just looking at it spatially, it seems like it's too close if they have a 40-foot mature height, unless they grow upwards instead of out.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is still open, so is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? See, no one else closed the public hearing. And commissioners, are there any further questions of staff? Or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
I'll start us off with a motion. I'd recommend approval of staff recommendations on A and B with an amendment to number three under B, so that it would read, "The applicant shall revise the landscaping plan so that views of the historic armory are accessible to the public before building permits may be issued."
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items A and B with an amendment to condition three under the site plan review, so that it states that the applicant shall revise the landscape plan so that views of the armory are maintained before building permits may be issued. Commissioner Freeland?
This wouldn't necessarily decrease the number of trees. It's just using a different criteria.
Correct. The intent behind the language change is that is that this is historic structure and we want to maintain those views to the historic structure, that we have a city policy of having tree canopy, which we've heard from the diocese today. And that I think we can achieve both with a careful plan where we have some trees, but make sure that we're respecting the history of the site.
Yeah, Commissioner Lukey here.
Yeah, I guess I would say, given that it wasn't, it didn't seem as though it was a really thoughtful landscaping plan as much as a misunderstanding over how many trees they had to shove on the site, I think some additional design time on the landscaping plan would be called for. In addition to just respecting the structure, I hope that also extends into the memorial in the corner and how the landscaping is either a backdrop for that or or another, or unfortunate view corridor to a smoking area. So I would like to see it be something that complements the architecture of the building and also adds green. I don't, I do think it's excessive and awfully dense for what we would need on this site. I'm more so driven by those two factors than by necessitating an additional outside smoking area. So fine if it's an outdoor gathering space. I just think it should be done more mindfully as to how it actually helps the building and helps the memorial in the corner, both feels though they're appropriately sited with greenery around them.
Commissioner Magrino? Question for staff. Would you like a more specific direction than that? Is that something, do you think you can work with that? You know, in between now and-
I do not need a more specific direction. We'll be sitting down with the Hennepin County and the landscape consultant to go over the whole site in more detail.
Okay, looking out for, looking out for staff. Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
And that motion carries, that concludes our discussion on item nine. Our final item for discussion is item 11, the Adult and Teen Challenge Gymnasium Expansion. Staff is Ms. Seether. We just had one person who'd like to speak on this item. Maybe if you wouldn't mind, if you had a question or topic you'd like to be addressed, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone and just mention. If you could come to the microphone, that'd be good, so it's picked up on the recording. And please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Bruce Cornelius, and I'm a property owner via contract for deed as of May 15. And I've spoken with the parties involved, and I've gathered enough information that I'm happy with the project and I have no objections.
All right, thank you. Okay, Shanna, if you, if there's anything you'd like to add? I think otherwise this might be a fairly straightforward one. I don't think we have anything, anyone else who was wanting to speak. But yeah, we'll still have a public hearing.
Thank you, President Brown, members of the Planning Commission. Staff reviewed applications for the expansion of non-conforming use to allow for the addition and recognition of the duplex as part of the campus and site plan review. As a result of our analysis, we identified several conditions of approval. I've had an opportunity to discuss those at length with the architect and the applicant, and they are in agreement with those stated conditions of approval. Staff does not have any additional comments for you this afternoon. Thank you.
All right, so are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. And if there's someone on behalf of the applicant who would like to speak, if there's anything you'd like to add, we can give you that opportunity. If not, I don't know that the commission has any questions for you, so. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes?
I did not sign up. My name is Chris Chukyatsi.
No, you don't need to sign up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Chukyatsi, 3300 Stevens Avenue South. So I am a neighbor of Minnesota Teen Challenge. I just want to know what exactly is going on, like where the extension is happening, like what structure they're adding on to? And if there is additional parking, because as it is, there are numerous fans that park on 33rd and Stevens Avenue throughout the day. And a lot of the residents who don't have other parking have nowhere to park. So I just want to know more information.
Yeah, we can ask Shanna to briefly go over the site plan for us.
The easiest for pointed discussion. So here's First Avenue South, 32nd North, Plan North is up on this particular plan. There's an area that's currently devoted to outdoor, I'm sorry, here we go, volleyball court, so the addition will be approximately in that area. The addition will be 6,500 square feet in area approximately. So here is in plan view, the site plan, showing the location of the addition. Due to the location of the addition, they were having to modify the parking lots in order to maintain the minimum off-street parking that they currently have. They're already in excess of what is required, I believe 21 is the required minimum, and they have 43 spaces that are provided on site. In addition to that, they have some bicycle parking. So to answer the person's question about additional parking, there will not be any additional parking provided. However, they will be, they will not be losing any parking with the addition. And I should say too, the only thing that would trigger additional off-street parking for a community residential facility is the addition of more beds. So in that case, there is not an additional requirement with the addition or expansion.
All right, Commissioner Lukey here.
And so just to clarify for the resident, that it's just a gymnasium being added. It's not additional things that require parking.
That is accurate.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? See, no one else closed the public hearing. And commissioners, we just have the two applications before us, expansion of a non-conforming use in site plan review. Someone like to start us off with a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation for both items A and B. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Five, I mean, seven zero.
Okay, and that motion carries, that concludes our discussion on item 11. It also concludes our business for today. We have committee the whole on Thursday. Our next meeting is June 26th, and we are adjourned.